Good evening. Welcome to the workshop for the month of February 2021 with the Marion City Council, City of Tawny Town. We'll begin with our pledge to the flag. I'll ask Councilman Haynes to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Councilman, very much. But the records reflect that all are present accounted for with the exception of Councilwoman Fuller. She is under the weather and therefore excused from the meeting. I appreciate her giving me notice on that. Next, we're going to review of the minutes. These are for the January 6th and January 11th regular meetings. Any comments, questions, or amendments to the minutes as presented to you this evening, Council? All right. Everything looks good. They will be up for adoption on Monday evening. I'll now ask the council if there's anything on the agenda that presents a conflict of interest for them this evening. All right. Everyone is happy. Moving right along, we have for introduction this evening ordinance 01-2021, budget amendment number one. I'm going to ask our city manager, Mr. Weaver, to kind of guide us through this a little bit.
Okay, so what we have in the top part, we received a number of grants related to the Corona Relief Fund. Most of those were received, of course, for a specific purpose. So there's a corresponding entry down under the general fund section specifically for City Hall. We have the $56,000 that we received for the upgrade to the council chambers for the audio video equipment to better facilitate live streaming and hybrid meetings as we move forward. There's also money we received for police overtime, $20,009.06. And again, you'll see that dispersed down in the police overtime line on the expense side. We also received $14,000 that was spent for equipments to improve our remote work capabilities. So basically, everything related to the grant funding was for a specific expense. So it's all kind of a wash on that. The next line down under insurance claims that was unbudgeted, $42,000 that we received from the relative to the collision damage for City Hall. So that was added into the revenue side. And of course, that is offset by additional expenses for the City Hall repair and renovation. On the decrease column in the top half under interest income, that's basically our the interest received, the rates are really, really down. So the interest we've been receiving is much lower than we budgeted. So we wanted to reflect that for more accurate accounting in the budget. The next couple of things, we are going to be using an increase in fund balance of $110,000 and also park fund, park fee in lieu money of $150,000 that's going to go towards park capital that was not budgeted. So basically, everything is, the net effect is zero, but we are going to be taking the $110,000 more out of fund balance than we anticipated with the original budget. That's, I guess, the the end result of all the adjustments. If anyone has questions about something specific on there, I'll do my best or get back to you Monday if I can't answer it tonight.
Jim?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any outstanding grant funding that we anticipate that could change these numbers again?
At this point, the Corona Relief Fund monies, we don't expect anything new to come through there. I have applied for a grant for Main Street relief. That has not been officially announced yet as far as awards for that. But again, that's another one of those things that it would be money in and then distributed to the Main Street businesses. So it would kind of be a pass through sort of situation again. So as far as something that's going to help reduce what we're taking out of fund balance, nothing's on the horizon for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is actually about the the interest income. And I appreciate that we're only having to take 110,000 out of fund balance, but otherwise there's that, you know, there's no net change apart from that. So I guess my question is, with the 47,000 being a decrease, I mean, how are we compensating for for that? That would give us the net zero.
Okay, so the, let's see. How we end up? So if I understand the question, are you basically getting at how do we get from that 47,000 to having to take 110 from fund balance?
Maybe I misunderstood you and I apologize. Please do correct me if I if I did. But I believe you'd said that there was otherwise, there would be no net change except for the money that's coming out of fund balance. So is the 47,000 in interest income part of that 110,000? Or is that 47,000 compensated for in some other way?
Okay, okay. So the 47,000 reflects a shortfall from what we budgeted. So in order to offset that, part of that is offset by the additional 110,000 that we're taking from fund balance.
Thank you.
Councilman, okay. On a similar note, as we talked about with the checking account interest being so low because of historically low interest rates, we did receive communication from Davenport, Joe Mason, with them suggesting that we look into some refinancing of many of our loans. He talked about many municipalities are looking at it now and saving apparently some pretty good amounts of money in doing so. Is council interested in directing staff to to kind of work with Davenport, get a report from them of what they see as a possibility? All right, very good. I know Joe was interested in setting up a call and talk about what what he sees in other municipalities. I think that would help us. So with that, we'll direct staff to open that conversation and we'll we'll see what kind of savings we can experience with that. So, all right, thank you all. Next, it's listed for introduction, but it's a resolution. So for clarification, resolutions do not require introduction. Is that correct? Mr. Gullum, Mr. Weaver?
You're going to, you are able to adopt this at the same meeting you introduce it, not tonight, but Monday. So you're right, just put it on for adoption if it's, if that's what you want to do.
If we're good with it, very good. So it's not a formal introduction of this next piece of legislation. Resolution 2021-04, Amendment to the Employee Manual Regarding Extended Emergency Policy. I'll open the floor for questions, or do you want a rundown of what's presented, everybody? Councilman Viggliotti, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions or maybe a couple of points. I'm not quite sure. But if Jim wants to give us a brief rundown so the public knows that we're talking about, I have no concern about that.
Okay. The condensed version is that with the current state of emergency related to the pandemic, we have had primarily issues that are not really addressed in the employee handbook or the personnel manual. So we've had changes to work hours. We've had use of administrative leave for basically telling employees to stay home on workdays and things that that really were not anticipated prior to the pandemic. So this, what could be an addendum to the personnel manual, gives us the ability to have a, it basically puts in policy some of the things that we found we had to do to respond to the pandemic. So a situation where we have a weather-related emergency typically that's over in a few days. And we recover and we get back to normal. This has been, you know, a longer term issue that's had impact on people's ability to take leave, on scheduling coverage, on creating different shifts for people and things like that so that we keep people separated and things that really were unforeseen prior to the pandemic. So that that's the overall intent of of this policy, to be able to address the situation that we're in now. And some few, you know, should we have another situation in the future that is longer than your typical weather type emergency?
Do you have questions after that explanation?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I guess, you know, I'm not, I really don't have an argument with the idea that the city manager would be able to authorize a number of things under the emergency operations policy. For me, though, my concern is, and Jim, just let me preface, I mean, this is certainly not directed towards you. When I say city manager, I mean city manager just as the position. For me, this is a little open-ended. And what I mean by that is what if there happens to be some kind of disagreement between the mayor and council and the city manager about the implementation of the emergency policy at any particular point in time? And so I guess what I'm looking for here is some kind of check specifically enumerated that says that, you know, the mayor and council are ultimately going to have the final say, because I do note in here that, you know, if there comes, if it comes to a point where, you know, the budget ends up needing to be amended, then the mayor and council are going to be consulted to compensate for the differences through the emergency policy. But I'm not seeing anything in here about the ultimate power of the mayor and council to be able to say, well, you know, the state of emergency for the state has ended, but we're still doing it locally and it's time for us to end it as well. So if there's a disagreement between the city manager and any mayor and council, I want to know, you know, I want to see something in here about checks and balances, I guess is the best way to put that.
Councilman, before you move on, I want to ask real quick. In our mayor's calls, this has come up a number of times comparing what different municipalities do. And the way I envision it should be as as the head of the government, the mayor and city council really need to ultimately make that decision. The the mayor is the one that would declare a state of emergency. And then the council would have to vote to extend it if necessary. So this is the method that Westminster uses, as well as pretty much any government entity would do such a thing. Pretty much, the mayor would declare, empower the city manager as necessary. And then, of course, make council aware of the declaration. And then to extend it past a certain amount of time, whether it's 30 days or whatever, it'd have to be periodically approved by council to be extended. So that that's a discussion among the mayors in the county. I think that needs to be a little better reflected here. But I think that kind of goes to what you were saying is that you need to be that buy-in. And I think having approval, instead of having one person make an indefinite, it's going to last, or it's going to go until I say it's done. I think we need to have council being able to say, yes, we're going to extend it, or no, we're done. The other thing I think we're missing here is actually a definition of of an emergency.
That was another one of mine.
We've struggled with that in the past, and the only thing our code talks about are snow emergencies. But obviously, a pandemic being an emergency is not the only one. And there's no way that we would possibly cover what all emergencies we could possibly see. But I do think at some point it needs to be in here or in some form where we designate what is an emergency.
And I'd like to add on to that. I I agree with those comments. And in discussing this a bit with the city attorney, the earlier draft that was pulled from your packets last month was not as specific as this as to when that policy would be triggered. And Jay suggested that we advise that we really need to limit it to a city declared state of emergency. And in discussion, we reviewed the, basically, our charter and code are silent on declaration of an emergency situation. So in conversation, it was decided that really that would fall under the the general powers of the mayor. It's not specifically enumerated, but that that would be the idea that the mayor would declare the state of emergency within the city. That process certainly could be further developed and and perhaps it should be something that's that's where we do a code amendment or perhaps even a charter amendment for the powers of the mayor to be able to do that. I thought that was a little beyond what would actually be appended to the personnel manual, though. I think that's a bit of a separate issue, but for practical purposes, the mayor would be able to declare that state of emergency, just like the mayor has the authority to issue executive orders for, say, a drought situation with water restrictions, that kind of thing. But again, it certainly could be framed out better in the code.
And since Jim drug me down the path on this, let me let me do a little bit of that. I think that if you want to get into this and set some framing, you're talking about doing it in the administrative section of the code. So we're not really going to mess with the charter and the mayor's power. The mayor, as the CEO, does have the power, which is what the city manager just told you. But there might be something where the framework would be the American declare, and then it has to be approved by the council within 30 days. You know, we put a number in there so the council eventually gets on. And then there has to be an expiration unless it's renewed, something to that effect. So you would pass an ordinance to do that, and we could put something together pretty easy if that's what you wanted to do. But as Jim said, this is, this is a tangent off of what exactly we're doing, but it probably is worth doing anyway.
Where I come from with with state emergency of these things like that is with Westminster, you know, they declared a state of emergency in Westminster for the pandemic. And the reason they did, no one else had done so, is the form of government. You do a state of emergency that way, the powers that are generally spread across, say, a council, Westminster has a stronger council. It kind of gets centralized to the mayor or whoever they direct it to. In other municipalities in the county, mayors already have that authority and councils more legislative. So when you really think about, for example, the governor was the same way. They declare state of emergency, it centralizes those powers to that person. It would be the same concept here. Any powers that the mayor or city manager don't already have would be centralized to them until the council is essentially up for approval or or it comes to them for decision. In terms of budget, it's just going to come to council later as opposed to being approved ahead of time. So that that's kind of the concept behind a state of emergency in a broad spectrum. Mayor Protem, I see you have something?
No, I just wanted to comment that none of which belongs in this employee handbook. Maybe we could sort of cross-reference it or something, but you don't want all of that previous discussion and in the handbook.
Right. We just want to make sure that it's not, that there's not confusion between the code and the handbook. If they read two different ways, it's going to cause confusion for whoever's in that.
Yeah, that's fine. They just need to be cross-referenced.
Right. So I imagine in 20 years, if you have a mayor and a city manager who read it two different ways, you're going to have a a butting heads of that. So as clear as we can be is always the best way. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Viggliotti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, most of my questions were taken care of, and the one final question kind of goes off of what you said about definitional terms of emergency. And I guess, I mean, I don't know whether it's, again, whether it's pertinent to this or as Mayor Protem says to, you know, to something else, you know, that we can cross-reference, but in going off of how to define an emergency, what if there is a situation, you know, as our attorney had mentioned, where there's a, like a city declared emergency versus a county or a state or federal declared emergency? And I guess I want to further resolve, you know, I guess, that that distinction between those.
Well, when you say, you mean like what sort of event could cause that or?
Well, I mean, if the city has to declare one specifically for itself, I want to make sure that that's also part of, part of everything, that if we're facing a situation that someone else isn't, that what's in the handbook isn't going to be affected by whether or not the state or the the federal government has declared an emergency.
But that that was one of the things that we talked about with city manager is that this would only apply if the city declared an emergency. So if the state declares one because it's a huge natural disaster and we're affected, we would still need to call our own, meaning that we have control of when it starts and when it stops, because that's the goal of it. The state of emergency, meaning the state of Maryland's emergency, would still apply to us as to state things. But we have our own, and that that's pretty important in this is that we don't ride on anyone else's discussion decisions. It's on our end.
Thank you very much, Jay.
All right, Councilman Haynes, did you have something?
No, sir. My comments were taken care of during the discussion.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. Do we wish to offer amendments to this prior to Monday, based on conversations we've had this evening? Or do we want to look at amending code to to better discuss?
I feel like amending code might be a little bit better. Yeah, I mean, Councilman Viggliotti, I don't mean to circle back, but is there any specific language in the draft that you feel is, you know, excessively open-ended or?
I, for me, Councilman Haynes, the concern, you know, initially started with, I just, I would like to see something in there that maybe references, and this is why, you know, the mayor pro tem's comment about cross-referencing would be important, and where the mayor's comment about, you know, amending elsewhere would be important, that, you know, the handbook says with respect to the mayor declaring the state of emergency, I want that to be in there somewhere. So there isn't that, that, you know, combustibility between two diverse or two dissenting positions.
All right. So what we need to look at is, in addition to this, amending the code to specify the actual declaration of the emergency as well as the powers of the council to extend or end a state of emergency after a set amount of time. So that would be a separate thing. I don't think it should hold this up at all. If we're looking to approve this Monday night, that's fine. But I think we also need to look at the code, just make sure that that is clarified for everyone. I want to make sure that council has the authority due to them to limit a state of emergency as well. Mr. Weaver?
Just one last thing. Jay called to my attention today that there's legislation pending, House Bill 581 that has to do, that speaks to hazard pay essential workers and and things of that nature. I've only had a chance to look briefly at it. So between now and Monday, should something arise related to that, we'll advise on that. But I just wanted to make you aware that that there is something moving through the legislature right now that ties into this type of thing. And I don't know if there's going to be any potential effect on this policy or not, but just wanted to get it on your radar screen.
I'm going to, unfortunately, I missed legislative committee this morning, but I'm going to reach out to MML about that house bill and just see what their take is, if they have a feeling of how possible it is to go. I know Mr. Gullum mentioned that the Attorney's Association is looking at it as well. So we'll keep an eye on that. There are a lot of bills that are looking to affect municipalities, most of them in not so great ways, in our opinion. Mayor Protem, did you have something?
Yes. So Jay, what is the proper way to cross-reference, since the mayor has suggested not holding this up and adopting it on Monday? What's, what should be in this to say, to cross-reference it to the code that we'll be possibly amending?
I'll pull out and look at it, but I think it's going to be the way we just use the term, and for our purposes tonight, Tawny Town State of Emergency, something like that. If we use that term consistently in what's in front of you, then we will pass an ordinance that basically says a Tawny Town State of Emergency is declared when, and then put all the details.
Okay.
Just the titles are going to be important to be consistent.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other questions or comments before we move on? All right. Thank you all for the discussion. I appreciate that. Up for adoption Monday evening, we have resolution 2021-03, the water allocation for February of 2021. Comments, questions, concerns? Very cut and dry. We do it each month. For those who are tuning in, this is a regular thing for us. With that, we're moving to our city manager report. Mr. Weaver, what do you have for us this evening, sir?
Just updates on the usual status report. We are still waiting for MDE's approval on the Trapanian Terrace Stormwater retrofit project. Jay obtained a copy of the court order directing the property be transferred to the city as far as ownership, and that was provided to MDE. So hopefully that will get things moving again at MDE. Related to COVID-19, as I mentioned earlier, I did apply for the Maryland Strong Economic Recovery Initiative for Main Streets. So the jury's out at this point on the awards. We understand that for $5 million that was available, there were applications for $13 million submitted. So the awards, at this point, it looks like the awards may be reduced so that everybody gets a slice of the pie. But there was apparently, you know, far more submitted in applications than money available. But hopefully we'll hear something in the coming weeks on that. Let's see. We had re-advertised for the economic development position as well as the planning and zoning position. We did receive quite a few resumes for the EDC position, and Clara is working to schedule interviews for that now. We did not get as many for the planning and zoning role, but we have have a couple of potential candidates there. So we're trying to move forward with that, but it's been been kind of a long road on those, filling those positions. But hopefully we'll manage to fill at least one of them this time around, and we'll have to have some conversations if things don't work out for both. Quick follow-up on last month, we talked about parks regulations. And as I think noted in the minutes, I was to delve into that a little bit more. So as far as adopting regulations for the individual parks, what we have in the code currently, the code provides rules and regulations that apply to all parks or city maintained property. And then it talks about the hours being set from time to time by council, talks about vehicles in the park. But then it goes on to say that conditions and regulations as to use of any city-owned parks may be established from time to time by resolution. So the current code is a little bit of a mix of specific things enumerated and then the ability to provide for regulations by resolution. So it could be a little clearer, but the ability to adopt resolution, adopt a resolution for an individual park is already there in the code. So if we do want to say we can have pets in, you know, three of our parks or something, we have the ability to set that by resolution. So that, again, just a quick follow-up from what was discussed last month.
On that note, do we know the resolution, the history that set that rule? I think the only place we found it mentioned is on the website. I don't think there's any written rule from the council saying that dogs are only allowed in one park. I think it was just something on the website. Is that correct, Mr. Weaver?
It is, I believe, posted on the signs in the parks. But we have not found resolutions adopting the rules that are actually posted on the signs.
Okay. And I guess the question for you or for Mr. Gullum is, do we wish to attack this with a resolution? Or simply, can we just say, take down the signs and take it off the website? How official do you want to be about this?
I think we have a couple of months before the parks really start to be used more heavily that we can work with our Parks Director to That we can work with our Parks and Rec Director to review the rules and regulations for the parks where we do want to consider allowing pets. And, and, and if that's going to be all parks, so be it as well. But I think we have a little bit of time to review the existing rules and then. Provide a modified list of rules and regulations and adopt them by resolution before warm weather comes along. I, I know it's going to be warm in just a couple more months, but I think that gives us time to. To review the rules, update them, and then do a resolution to adopt them.
Warmer weather is at least six weeks away, I was told yesterday. All right, so we'll circle back to that, we'll wait for some advice from Parks and Rec on that. Jim, we haven't heard Sewell annexation. Are we on track? Is there any updates at all on the Sewell annexation?
We do not have any at this point. Their attorney has reached out, we do need to schedule some time to sit down with, with Sewells and their. Potential developer and their attorney. Right now, we are still working through our sewer capacity issues. And until we have more detail and more of a plan developed on that. We really can't move forward with a, an annexation plan or annexation agreement. Until we have the, that capacity issue really better fleshed out.
Okay. Very good, and that's an ongoing task, I understand, so we're, we'll keep on it. Hopefully we can get somewhere with that.
And, yeah, another quick update, we have, just last week, we again submitted to MDE for financing assistance for. The Robert Smill Road reconstruction project, so we've submitted for. Funds for stormwater management, for storm, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, water. And we also submitted an application for the Meadowbrook Sewer Interceptor that we've talked about previously. We are planning to obviously move ahead with that project regardless. But when the financing round opened up, we thought we may as well go ahead and submit an application for it, we'll see what happens. This is the one where you may recall, in past years, we, we've been submitting for this project for a number of years. And we have received, in past years, we received one of the three components, but we've never received all three at once. And what we have been eligible for has been financing and not actually grant money. So we, we really are going to need to pull the trigger and move ahead with this in the near future, regardless of. Of obtaining grant funds. So the Public Works Director and I were discussing this last week, and he's indicated that the condition of the infrastructure out there. It is getting to the point where we may just need to move ahead, whether we qualify for MDE financing or not. So that's. I bring that up because it does tie into our capacity management issues. Because this Robert Smill Road project is one of the projects we have in mind that hopefully will free up capacity at the wastewater treatment plant. By reducing our influent infiltration. The, the Meadowbrook Sewer Interceptor. Based on the calculation CDM Smith has done. Could reduce our INI enough that we could move forward with a, an annexation plan for the Sewell property. There's that much INI projected for that Meadowbrook Interceptor. So we are talking about some big numbers that we hopefully can address with a relatively. Relatively simple project with the Meadowbrook Interceptor. So I bring that up because it does tie back into the Sewell question. And that's, that's really about it for, for my report, unless anybody has questions.
All right, are there any questions on the City Manager Report or the departmental reports? All right, I do want to make special note from the departmental reports in Parks and Rec. It was posted online today, there is some work that's going to be going on at the War Memorial Memorial Park. If you get any questions from residents, be aware the two trees kind directly behind the memorial are being taken down. They'll be replaced with something else. Reasoning was, where they are and how they have grown has actually started to damage the memorial itself with the root base. So they will be taking those down, replacing them with other trees, I think they're actually, will blossom around the time of Memorial Day, which is a, a great idea. And then there will be some repairs to the memorial itself, replacing some bricks, the walkway in front. Dressing it up, it hasn't had some attention for a while, but if you have residents ask you what's going on or what's happening. That is the reason that that's happening there. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to Lorena, and she can help you. Any questions on departmental reports before we move on? All right, with that, I'll go to Mr. Gallow. Aloha, sir, what do you have for us?
Good evening, everyone. I just let you know, the courts are still on a modified schedule, so things are very slow getting things done. We are still waiting for the actual deed that goes with the Trevanian Terrace lot that the City Manager talked about. Well, but the order was at least signed, and so the rest is in works. The other issues are still pending, and I think the mayor and the City Manager talked about that, the refinance opportunities from Davenport. I had an opportunity to talk with them a little bit about those. And bottom line for us is, they came to us with the opportunity. And they will give us some background, and they need some information from us, but that's all no charge. Unless we decide to move forward, in which case then it'll be priced into it. The biggest thing that we would have to look forward to now is, more than likely, we've done tax-exempt financing in the past. And with the way the laws have been restructured, we may need to get a bond rating in order to go to the bond market. And we've never done that because we thought it was really expensive and things like that. But now it's gotten to the point where it's an easier process, towns like Myersville and things like that have done it. It may help us in the long term, because then we're creditworthy, that's basically what it's supposed to be showing. So anyway, that's going to be a little bit of work, it's not just simply, hey, let's refinance and go to a bank. It's, it's some work involved in doing it, but the numbers, if they worked out, are several hundred thousand dollars in savings, if they work out. So that's a little bit of that, and then we already talked about the annexation agreement with Sewells. I know that we are getting pressure, they did provide us with an annexation agreement for review, but as the City Manager said. There are lots of other strategic issues that need to be involved and dealt with. I know that the council had instructed, hey, we want to move ahead on this, so, you know, we want to show you that we're making progress. But there are issues involved, and if you're interested in being part of the solution, you know, let City Manager know, he'll give you the details of that as well. That's all I have.
All right, any questions for Mr. Gallow on his report this month? All right, with that, we will move into our new business, we have our monthly financial report. That will be up for approval Monday evening. Are there any questions from the City Council on that report? All right, hearing none, we'll move into our accounts payables, again, up for approval Monday evening. Any questions on the accounts payables? No, okay. Next, we have a special event approval, hoping that 2021, we can start having these events again. Knock on, I have wood all around me here, this is great, knocking on that. Special event approval, Susan G. Coman Promise Ride, Memorial Park, June 13th, 2021. There is some information in your packets regarding that, are there any questions with this special event permit application? I know it was approved last year with, with no issues. I expect that that could be the case again, but Monday evening, you'll be able to decide if you wish to approve that. It has already been approved by Public Works and the Police Department, so it's up to us to decide. Number four under new business, boards and commissions nominations, I will have nominations for you Monday evening. I'm still looking for one more board of elections. If you have any suggestions, please let me know, if you know of anyone that wants to be on a board or commission, please have them reach out to myself. I know Councilman Fuller gave me a name for one of the boards. We will also have an opening for Parks and Rec, actually now, we have an opening there. So if you know of anyone, or if you're watching, if you're doing anything here, let me know if you'd like to serve. We have a lot of opportunities, and I love to see when residents get involved. But yeah, Monday night, I will bring you some nominations, I will probably email them to you ahead of time. That way, if you have questions privately, that's fine, I do want the discussion to occur Monday evening for that. With that, the last item we're going to remove, we did receive resignation from Gary Smith from Parks and Rec Advisory Board. So that opening is now there. We will bring, I'll work with Lorena and Kelly Bowie, the Chair, to bring a name for you next month for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. With that, I have nothing else except to mention, remember, it is February, and that is Black History Month. I encourage everyone to delve into the history of Tawnytown and some of the significant African-Americans that have contributed to our city. We have, I know the, I believe the Hill family has been very significant in our city, they have their big family picnic every summer. They've done it for, I don't remember how many years, it's been several decades. I know they were featured last year in the Carroll County Times. Just keep in mind, there, there's a vast history to the city, and they're an important part of it. So Black History Month, keep an eye on social media, I believe Lorena will be doing some things to highlight it as well. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, stand by, Mr. Weeper, do you have something else to add?
Yes, we are going, we need to schedule our budget workshop. So that we can get our advertisements squared away for the necessary hearings and, and budget schedule. So if we're, if we're not able to come to consensus on a date this evening, or how we want to approach it, we really need to by, by Monday at the latest. So we can get the advertisement in. And again, you know, we have the, we've done this as a standalone meeting some years, some years, we've. Just started our workshop early and had a budget session in the beginning of the workshop. So we can handle it any number of ways, but we just need to nail down the, the schedule.
My preference is that we do a standalone meeting, reason being, that way our focus is on that one topic. And we're not pressured at the end of a workshop then to get out early and not discuss other topics that need to be. Mr. Weeper, do you have an approximate timeframe you want us to shoot for?
Barry's email with the schedule, give me just a moment here.
Oh, yes, I'll look as well.
And I'm seeing just how many emails I have from Barry. Claire, do you by chance have that handy?
So I just looked through mine, I don't have any emails regarding that.
Well, I can tell you that the budget ordinance has to be introduced at the March 3rd workshop. And the, we have to post the special budget workshop two weeks prior to the hearing. Does that help at all?
Seems like a tight timeframe.
I know that in the past, that you all have tried to get the budget adopted in May, and so that might be why you have a March lead date. Especially in election years, you wanted to do that, and that's this year, so. How things fall this year, though, may not be possible, because the first Tuesday in May predates any of your meetings. So, think about that.
The first Tuesday in May, I'm sorry?
Your election predates any of your meetings in May this year. If that makes sense?
The election on May 3rd, right?
The next, May 3rd would be before the May 5th and 10th council sessions. And you normally would adopt your budget on the 10th, if you tried to do it in May anyway. So what I'm saying is, you are going to have an issue with the possibility of new council people, no matter what you do, because the election is kind of earlier, the way the calendar falls this year.
We want to.
I will have some dates, I'll work with the Treasurer and see when she expects to have. More of the revenue side ready to present, and we'll nail down a date on Monday, if that's all right.
Okay, everyone have your schedules with you Monday, so we can figure this out. Councilman Bigliotti, go ahead.
Can I, can I just ask, and maybe it's a simple process, but. Even with the election prior to the, the workshops, like even though we try to have the budget taken care of before the election. If the election did produce, say, three new council members. Then the existing council members would simply vote on the budget under old business, would they not?
That's what you've done in the past, is that they would do it under old business. And the issue that you always have been worried about is, what if that wasn't sufficient enough? Meaning that there was more questions, and the new people had more questions. That's why a lot of places say, well, if the election's in May, you may not adopt it till June, and the new people just have to get on board. So there's no perfect answer, it's just that that has to be figured out, that you're not going to be able to get your budget adopted prior to your May meeting. It's not going to happen.
Thank you.
All right, so have your calendars ready for Monday evening, we need to set some dates. Anything else before we adjourn, Mr. Weeper?
The, the tentative schedule, finally, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we are tentatively scheduled, Mr. Mayor, to review the draft budget with you on Friday, February 7th. And the tentative schedule would be. Let's see, budget workshop, February 17th is a potential date. That is a Monday evening.
Well, that's.
No, no, I'm sorry, no, that's, that was last. Last year's budget, we've got a combo of this year and last year's on this draft, I apologize. So right now, we're scheduled to have a draft budget to sit down and review it with the mayor on February 7th. So probably no sooner than a week after that.
February 7th is a Sunday.
Okay.
I mean, I'm good with that, but that's your call.
No, that's, that's.
All right, we'll reconvene, we'll get that figured out prior to Monday, I haven't seen the schedule yet. So we'll, we'll discuss it Monday evening. Motion to adjourn, please. All right, do I have a second, please?
Second, Mayor Protem can have the, the motion.
Motion from Mayor Protem Foster to adjourn, second from Councilman Bigliotti, all in favor of adjournment, signify with your thumbs up. Anyone opposed? All right, have a great night, everybody, thank you.